All right, then, let's call the meeting to order. Welcome, one and all, to the April 25th edition of the Trinity County Planning Commission. The first item we will have is public comment. Members of the public may address the Planning Commission concerning matters within our jurisdiction, which are now listed on the agenda, and to request that it be adjourned for a future meeting, no action may be taken on these matters at this meeting.
Good evening, Commissioner, Justin Hawkins from A-Corps. Before you deny to ask for an agenda item in the future, I'm asking that an appeal that I filed two weeks ago be placed on the agenda. The Planning Department's refused to move forward on it. I've provided you with a copy of the appeals process for Trinity County Code. And it says, the appeal I filed two weeks ago is for a decision of the Planning Director. And I'm being told that I have to have his permission to move forward now. And the Secretary of the Planning Commission has had the paperwork since, for two weeks today, I believe, two calendar. I would just respectfully ask that the Commission place my appeal on the next agenda. I don't know why, it seems a little odd to me, frankly, that the person who I'm appealing his decision has the ability to block my appeal to go forward. I can't find it in the language here in Section A. But I paid the fee and I filed a form. I've provided guidance on noncompliance of Trinity County Code and CEQA, both matters of your jurisdiction. So I respectfully ask to be placed on the next agenda that's possible with noticing, I realize there's noticing problems with a one-week paper, a week, you know, one-weekish paper, so. May ninth would be, I thought, inappropriate with sufficient time, and it's already been two weeks, and it should have already been scheduled to be maybe next available to you would be appropriate. I appreciate your time and matter, thank you. Just for the record also, it's PL 2019-00026. 26 is my appeal number.
Evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, Tom Belenko, Dudley City. I noticed the mobile dentist out in the driveway reminded me of the general plan. Because when you don't go to the dentist for a while, it gets harder and harder to go, and it gets actually worse and worse when you don't go. Updating our general plan gets more and more onerous as we think about it, and it doesn't happen. I know at one of the recent Order Supervisory meetings, there was discussion about beginning the process of identifying a consultant. And know of these consultants, and our planning staff has got beyond their handful with everything already going on. Still, I also know that if pressed, I'm sure you yourself, Mr. Chair, could write a general plan up here. Maybe you should, or that you would, just that you could. I know I could, I bet Arrow could, I see Jim Underwood back there, I'm sure he could. Doesn't mean any of his will or should, but it just means within 12 feet of where I'm standing, there's four county residents certainly could do it. I think a general plan is best when it reflects the community that it is the plan reflects. So I would suggest that maybe the Commission, and I don't know if it's within your province, but if it is, consider creating a either ad hoc or even standing subcommittee that probably would include a Commissioner and one other, maybe the Chair, to be the General Plan Committee and start at least thinking, discussing this process, maybe beginning to identify some other persons that might be able to assist as, even if it means working with a consultant, the more we can get the involvement of the community, the better our general plan is going to be. If we have to hire a consultant to put it all on the legalese and coordinate it, that's fine, but the more we can involve our community in the process, I think the better product is going to turn out. And rather than let the consultant lead us through that process, the more we can lead the consultant through that process, I think the better. So amongst all the other things you have to think about, let's not forget to go to the dentist.
Good evening, Veronica Kelly-Abby's Dudley City. I want to talk about enforcement. When there's a fire issue or a fire hazard out in our area, and I turned in a complaint for something that was on a conditional use permit that's supposed to be required to be there, and they weren't sure who that was going to go to because the cup was so old, has nothing to do with cannabis, it's so old. But it's a fire hazard for us out there, and it says on the conditional use permit that there's supposed to be an elevated water tank for fire suppression, and there's nothing on the parcel. And nobody at the desk really knew where that was going to go, or who I should talk to and what to do. So perhaps a better understanding of the process, when we all want to be part of the process in every way, but when the office that we go to doesn't know where it's going to go or how it works, it makes us even more confused. So perhaps that could be cleared out a little bit.
Any else? Okay, see no else, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the Commission. We'll move on to item number three, minutes. There are none, there's no more business, we'll move to new business, item number four. Item number four is public hearing regarding an appeal of the Planning Director's decision upholding the Weaverville Architectural Review Committee decision approving modification of aesthetics for the Mountain Healthcare Clinic expansion located at 31 Easter Avenue, Weaverville, APN 30104055, and the applicant is the Mountain Communities Healthcare District. The appellant is Susan J. Corrigan, this item is being continued from November 8, 18. Staff.
Did you want to speak to this?
I thought it was all yours.
Since the Planning Commission meeting on November 8, there have been two Weaverville Architectural Review Committee meetings.
Can you speak a little louder, please?
Is this better? Was it on?
Much better.
It is, okay. Since the November 8 Planning Commission meeting, there have been two meetings on-site at the clinic expansion with Weaverville Architectural Review Committee and the appellant and the applicant to consider aesthetics. That was the direction that we received from you on November 8. The outcome of those two meetings are in your agenda packets, and there was a letter that was submitted to you that's available to members of the public here as well, with the applicant's summation of what they submitted to the Weaverville Architectural Review Committee to mitigate aesthetics related to the projects. So that is where we left off with the last meeting.
Okay. Want to expand any?
For me?
Want to expand any further? Commission, any questions for the staff regarding the staff report or the material? Okay, this is a public hearing. I would like to open this up for the public.
Excuse me, but before you do that, the appellant and the applicant should both be able to speak, I believe.
Okay, let's hear from the appellant.
Hi, good evening, Susan Corrigan. I would like to thank each and every one of you for your service to our community. I would also like to personally thank the WARC Committee for the very difficult position they were put in regarding this project. So here we are, five months from the original appeal, which is driving home our point in November that this project did not have all the paperwork up to speed and ducks in a row for this project to have been approved by Mr. Tippett. It also has been shared with me that due to Mr. Tippett's load on his plate, traffic lights, new jail, and of course cannabis that is taking away from all processes in our county, Mr. Tippett should have turned this over to staff and not have made the decision on his own. Not only were completed plans, renderings, and review not performed properly by Mr. Tippett, this project did not go through the proper channels like all other projects that take place in our county. In November, we requested that this project be halted and sent back to the Planning Department for proper process, review, and public input. At the last meeting, Leslie Hebert did her best instructing you as to the options before you in November, but we don't believe that that was fully explained at the time, and since Mr. Tippett was not in attendance, representation, explanations, and full disclosure were not complete. Three years ago, when MCHD began this project, it was a sensitive project then, and these modules have not improved that situation. Carson Anderson, the senior planner at the time, proposed that this project be given a conditional use permit with mitigations measures being addressed by the WARC Committee. It has been explained to me that most conditional use permits are handled by written approval of use of conditions. Making changes to a project have to go through the planning staff for acknowledgement and written approval, which staff would follow ordinance number 315, Section 32 on the use permit, which I asked to be included in your packet this evening. Current staff has shared that they do not understand why Mr. Anderson set this project up the way he did. With that said, the WARC Committee was assigned to the original project and should not have been deciding if this project was a go or not, nor should they have been put in the position to mitigate the aesthetics, as this proposal is nowhere near the original project. I ask that Section 1732 be given to you, there are several descriptions that are in that section that staff could have turned to and should have turned to to deny this project and send it back to the drawing board, like other projects would have had to have done. There are two that stand out most in this ordinance, and that's Section 32070C1, which reads, "A use for which a use permit is granted must be established within two years after such a permit is issued. If such a use is not established, the use permit shall be deemed to have expired and be null and void." It was two years after the original project was heard, which that timeframe had passed, especially since it was a conditional use permit because it was in a sensitive area the project was impacting. Also, in Section 73207OE, it states abandonment. "Any use permit, the use of which is voluntarily interrupted for a period of excess of one year, shall be deemed automatically revoked." This one for sure applies to this situation because they had not started anything well over a year. There is also 173206O, which is deviation. Many of those things in that deviation paperwork you will see apply to this matter. So as you see, none of these staff turned to, nor did Mr. Tippett, to enforce the very ordinance he is hired to uphold. So where does that leave us all this evening? Well, it leaves the neighborhood disappointed that the very people who showed concern and compassion towards this historical area did not have our backs. It has tarnished the opinion of the hospital drastically. Friendships have ended, and it brought about the worst in people to the extent that someone was so upset wrote all over the building, which is called tagging, exactly what they wrote, which is what most of us were feeling. Of course, we were blamed for the tagging, which is even more ugly than the buildings themselves, and I don't need to write it out. I am here before you speaking the truth to all of you personally. They are butt ugly. Even after the mitigation measures, which are no fix for this situation, the mitigation measures are just trying to hide it, cover it up. They have already had leaking and are a Band-Aid that will only last 10 years if lucky. Soon, they will have sick building syndrome, and the hospital will have to move due to earthquake retrofitting that has happened to the hospital by 2030. I can't believe that the hospital doesn't go back to the drawing board, save the money they are wasting on this temporary fix, and work with the community to make a plan to build a new state-of-the-art hospital in a location appropriate for expansion and growth, not in a historical residential neighborhood. So in closing, I don't believe any of you sitting up there, or MCHD Board, or the supervisors feel these modules are appropriate for this site. I also believe that there is not one person with the backbone to say no to this project and send these ugly excuses for a clinic down the road. And I remind you that Mr. Tippett warned them not to bring them in till a decision was made, that it would be their expense if it was decided that it was not a fit. They took that risk. So no sob story about how they can't afford to remove them, or that the project is too far along to abandon, that's BS. They truly can't afford to keep them and their upkeep. I mean, really, this is the best MCHD could do for the community? It is up to all of you to now take a stand, stand up to due process and following our ordinances and regulations that are in place, to take a stand on how we allow projects to proceed in our county. If you can't take a stand, then I ask that you make some stipulations tonight. Both Taylor Street and Garden Gulch are in serious need of attention. The pavement of Taylor Street is crumbling and dangerous to walk up and down. Garden Gulch walk path is overgrown, and you can't see the lines. Two years ago, Mr. Tippett assured us that 25 mile an hour signs and slow signs would be put up, and attention would be given to these roads. Well, none of that has happened. We have seen the speed of the traffic increase over the years, and especially since the modules have come in. I feel that it is a direct reflection of the disrespect mentality that these modules have brought to our neighborhood. I would also like a clause given that when the hospital relocates at their expense, the modules be removed at that time, so we are not stuck with these crappy buildings forever. As you see, my last requests are based on the fact that I don't think any of you have what it takes to send these modules down the road. Based on how this project was handled, your very own ordinances and the sensitive area these modules have landed, you ethically and morally should deny this conditional use permit. Due to the mishandling of this project, I also feel you should send this to your supervisors for a final decision, which is my understanding you can have happen, saving us all the expense of filing an appeal, since we are being encouraged by the supervisors to bring it to them, especially after the snarky newsletter that was sent out in January by MCHD, leaving many appalled. I would like to point out, we had over 40 signatures objecting to this project, and it is not just the same people that are upset. Let's give VOS the opportunity to decide this matter. We may also be the last few here standing up because most of us, most people feel we're stuck with it, or we can't change it. It's been five months, and the momentum we had going for sure has fizzled, because people feel they're stuck. We may not be able to change it, but I was taught to see things through. It is not over till it's over. You have to stand up for what's right. This entire project has not been handled right. I respectfully conclude my appeal, and shame on all involved for taking our beautiful town and settling for anything less than the standard that I always thought set us apart from other small historic towns in this country. I encourage you to ask your staff about the ordinances and an explanation to why written approvals were not required, and dig into the process and the timeline that were not followed with this project, because you will find you have reasons the conditional use permit should have been denied, and you can deny it tonight. I also would like to point out that I searched the last two newspapers, and there was not public notification about this appeal in either one of the papers tonight. So again, processes, processes, processes were not met, timelines were exceeded, this should have completely gone back to planning staff and public review before these modulars landed on Taylor Street, and literally landed. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Please, let's not do that.
Good evening, Commissioners, Jim Underwood on behalf of the District. I won't take a great deal of your time because the District's position, summarizing what we believe to be the actual issues and really what was directed by the Commission back to staff and WARC, are the aesthetic issues that the staff report properly addresses and which I believe have been addressed to the satisfaction of WARC with the input of Historic Society and even Master Gardeners. So they're outlined, if you have questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them, but I think they've been fully addressed. There have been some new issues raised today, but I think the focus has to be on whether or not the specified roof design, exterior facade, landscaping, lighting, and other issues of aesthetic concern have been adequately addressed. And we believe that, based on the unanimous recommendation of work they have been, it just simply isn't properly before the Commission to keep raising new issues. What's before the Commission tonight is whether or not the aesthetic concerns that have been properly raised, and no one will disagree that it would have been ideal to have these resolved earlier, but they've been resolved. And so the District is certainly anxious to move forward, implement them, improve the site conditions, and seriously expand the healthcare opportunities for this committee. So I'd be glad to answer any questions, if you don't have any. The District's position certainly outlined in the letter I provided. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Underwood. Okay, with that testimony, I would like to open it to public comment. Anyone else who would like to comment on this item?
Hebert Harvey Weaverville. Keep it short. I'm in support of going ahead with the project as currently on track, and I'm very much for improving healthcare capabilities within the county, and I also like aesthetics, but also think that beauty is in the eye of the beholder. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name's Randall Walker, I live right across the street from Sue and Kelly, 110 Taylor Street. I don't know what modifications are being, have been proposed and have been approved. I can't believe that they're going to solve the aesthetic issue. I bought my house, my little house, in 2002, it was built in the 20s. I completely gutted it. A lot of people talk about gutting houses, but I actually did gut it inside and out, and I restored it to what I thought was appropriate for a house in the 1920s. At quite an expense, and a lot of study about what a house of that should look like. So I was actually dumbfounded when I saw these monstrous-looking buildings show up across the street, and the fact that they could have passed any kind of architectural review is just so far beyond me. One of the biggest eyesores, by the way, I defy, I would ask any of you and any in this building to go around this entire town and find an uglier set of buildings anywhere. There are none, not even in the straight stretch down there where aesthetics are not considered perhaps as much. It's dumbfounding to me. And no plantings, no fences, you'd have to have a 12-foot wall, which in itself would be ugly to cover it up. The seven or eight, however many there are, air conditioning units facing the street, now no architectural review committee would approve air conditioning units facing a street. They're always to be in the back of the building. I mean, you guys deal with this stuff, I assume, all the time. This is just beyond any reasonable consideration of aesthetics. The only thing, if we are stuck with these buildings, how they were approved in the first place, I have no idea, but if we are stuck with them, the only thing that I think could be done is get rid of those air conditioners. Put in a heat pump system, so we don't have this din, this raucous sound, filling the whole street from morning till night when it starts to get 100 degrees here. And then we don't have to look at them as well. If we could do that, that might at least put a Band-Aid on a bad situation. Apart from that, I'm extremely disappointed, I'm disappointed in the amount of effort, the time, and the money I've spent in my home to see such a building that's so out of place and so un-aesthetic show up across the street. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name's Kelly, excuse me. My name's Kelly Corrigan, Sue's husband. Her family's lived there, that house has been there before the hospital was built. Her family has supported that hospital that entire time. Her family's name is written in concrete in that foundation of that family. We have never been against this hospital. We have supported this hospital for a long, long time. What we are for is a new, state-of-the-art, small ER medical facility in the right location in our town for our future, not a Band-Aid for 10 years. 10 years from now, you're going to have to retrofit your hospital, and 10 years from now, the lifespan of that modular is going to deteriorate, sick building syndrome, whatever. It's a Band-Aid, we're wasting money, we need a, as someone said earlier, a new general plan, a future. We're not looking into our future. And what the Corrigans are for is a new healthcare system, not the modulars. Everybody understands that. It's a bad idea from the, landed, got pushed down our throat. We're not happy with it. We're stuck with it, we're trying to work with it. I want to thank somebody who has worked with me, Thurston Wilson, their general contractor... I want to thank somebody who has worked with me, Thurston Wilson, their general contractor was the first person to come and talk to me on a respectful level.
My name is Susan Alexander. I own a house on Water Works, looks directly down on the new clinic. And as far as aesthetics being in the eye of the beholder, I'm an artist, granted, and so even if you had no concept of aesthetics, I would venture that the majority of people would think it was an ugly structure. It looks like a prison. All of us, and I suspect probably none of you would want to be looking down on that from your house, and I understand the idea, the economic benefit of having this huge thing put there, but the problem is that the Indian Health Clinic is going to have a really beautiful clinic with all the facilities that the hospital doesn't have, with all the, without the bad vibes that the hospital has. So, you know, in the long run, I think it's kind of doomed. And I have been a hospital supporter until this issue came up. I was for the clinic, you know, I would never have imagined that something like what is there would have ended up there. I mean, it's just, I just can't hardly believe it. So I feel sorry for the whole hospital district. I feel sorry for the planning department that has really messed this whole thing up. And I really, I don't even know what else to say because I feel that probably it's going to just, there's nothing we can do about it. But you should know that, I mean, already know, it is horrible. So, and as a long-term neighborhood person, I would call, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I live directly across the street from Leclercy. My house was built in 1940. We had to end extensive remodeling, put a lot of money invested into our house as well. I'm not sure, because, you know, I'm not an appraiser, but when the clinic showed up, I pretty much felt that my property value went down. It's just very disheartening because I feel that there's been changes in the community that are not part of this particular issue of the hospital and yet they are. There's been, I work in the school system and I speak to a lot of families and I don't know a lot of the old-time families here. I don't know as many adults as I do children. I know a lot of the children, but what I hear is this used to be a good town. This used to be a great place to age your kids. And now we have homeless on the streets, we have a lot of problems with marijuana, we have drug deals going on, we have some of my ex-students, who I know personally, living under the bridge. And then this building shows up and graffiti gets written on it with a message of being ugly as if. And then Sunday, a block sedan, what's speeding 16 miles per hour up the street. You can check the police report because two of the neighbors called it in, one being myself. And it just really feels like this clinic and the presence of the clinic and all the troubles with it and the process that hasn't been followed and just the whole situation is reflective of what is going on in our town. And as Sue said, you know, maybe lots of little bit of steam, but I feel like also a level of pride that is missing. And you look at that building and you can't, you can't consciously feel proud about that. And I would think that the hospital being one of the mainstays of our community, that they would want to do something that they would be very, very proud of. And I cannot, I cannot, I cannot see where any pride is in this whole project. You know, I'm a prideful person. I take a lot of pride in my home. I've invested a lot of time and a lot of money in it and that clinic as is, is a huge slap in the face to me. It's like saying, why don't we just, in fact, at the last meeting that I attended here, someone who worked for the hospital suggested, well, if you don't like it, just leave it. And that kind of attitude certainly doesn't promote pride in the community either, so, I don't know. I guess I'm just saying, I don't know what the processes are or what your jobs are, but I would just hope that I'm still living in a community where people will do the right thing.
I'm Mary Cole and I'm the clinic manager for Trinity Community Hospital and the Hayport Community Hospital. And I can understand everyone's emotions and feelings. About a year ago, I was before the planning commission, and I want to draw this analogy. My husband and I had bought a property in Lewiston, a couple hundred thousand, and we found out that our neighbors were putting a tower, a cellphone tower, right up our back hill. And we took the, you know, at first we were very upset about it and we took the position that Lewiston needed a cellphone tower. What could we do to maybe meet them halfway? So thankfully, the planning commission, we offered instead of the metal tower, if they could go modify, and you all agreed to do that, and the tower's going in and the construction, and everybody's happy. These buildings aren't going to look like they're looking at right now, but it's been stalemate. We can't move forward. We have reached out to the architectural committee and there will be improvements on there. And I think if six to eight months from now, you're not going to know those buildings. The one thing that, sitting here listening, is everybody in that clinic takes great pride in Trinity County and Weaverville. We just, we don't sit back and say, well, live with it or anything like that. We're truly here for the community, for healthcare, and there's always room for more than one clinic. We had Dr. Stempel here for many years and we have Dr. Kraus and we're still seeing 80, you know, 65, 80 patients a day. So that means a lot to us and we look out those windows and want to know, when can we get into that building because we have providers sitting on top of each other. But we are truly here to work with the community, but I just really, truly feel, if you all give us just the time to get this moving and do the aesthetics, I don't think that, I think you'll see where we're going with this.
Thank you.
Daryl Porzlin, I am a board member of the hospital district. Couple of things to comment. I don't think any of us think those buildings look particularly good right now, but we did work very hard with the architectural review committee over the last period of time to come up with some remediations and modifications to the exterior, exterior of that building, which we think, and I think they think because they voted in favor of us going forward, will in fact change the aesthetics of that building. My understanding is that's what we should be talking about tonight is the aesthetics of the building. The other comment, I'd like to just make sure that everybody kind of understands, this has been described as a residential district. That hospital's been there since 1890. There are other medical facilities on both of those streets. So while it is, I agree, a residential district primarily, clearly it's also a hospital area. I mean, the historic of that building, the building that's there now was built in about 1948. So, I mean, there's been a lot of history of that building being, a hospital being in that location and clearly that's part of what needs to happen. But I do think that the work that the architectural review committee did, we were tasked with working with them to come up with solutions to whatever we did with that, whatever we did with any building there would try to make it fit better with the community and we think they've come up with those decisions. Clearly, a lot of what's been talked about tonight were things that were discussed at length with the architectural review committee and the things that we're talking about doing to modify the building, I think, would mitigate most of what they've been talking about. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Veronica Kelly Alves, Douglas City. Wasn't going to speak, but is that I wanted to know about this issue because I utilize the clinic and I understand the need for expansion. I also understand the need for a place to live. And what I want to say is something I've learned over attending these meetings now for almost a year, if not a little bit more, is that I've watched each and every one of you really look at the issues and it makes me sad to see people that feel like they should give up hope. No matter which way it goes tonight, I know that each and every one of you will take a look, or I beseech you to take a look, take a look at it for their side, for the hospital's side, which I know you will do. I don't think there's any paper exercises sitting up there tonight. And I want to say I appreciate that about each and every one of you. I feel like that these kind of issues, you guys keep getting, have to deal with these because it's something that's coming out of the office. I don't know if it's overwork or the paperwork or miscommunication and maybe that's something that could be worked on with everyone because that's what creates a lot of this, my side, your side, and we're all going to have our strong feelings, but I really hate to see citizens start to say, going to have it shoved down our throat. I think you're going to give it a lot of thought because I know you all will look at this material and make the decision that's best for healthcare here too. We need it, absolutely. And I applaud the hospital for trying to find a solution. I hate that it feels like it's been slipped in because that always leaves that grimy feeling and nobody wants that. And the citizens that live around that were willing to be a part of the whole process, it sounds like, from the very beginning and to feel that bait and switch a bit, whether it was or not. It has that impression and that always creates the bad feelings. So I just sort of encourage everyone to just communicate more, communicate better with each other so these kind of problems don't continue to pop up. And if there is an enforcement issue down the road, really address it in some way. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
I'm Chris Park and I have a house on Easter Avenue. I like, right down on the hospital and we've been there since '63 and we used to watch the ambulance come and try and figure out who had been in a wreck and try and identify them with binoculars since we've been there so long. And I'm in favor of the clinic. I think it's a good idea. Weaverville leads an alternative to regular doctors and I've been to the clinic a couple times and it's been really helpful. I think that when the original drawings came in, too expensive, and I could go into how, that's poor planning, when I build a house, I have my budget, I build, I draw my plans to my budget and not so much, you know, ask for everything and then change my plans later on, which is what I think happened here is they drew the plans, they came in over budget and then fell back on, you know, on a Band-Aid. Now, when they fell back on the Band-Aid, and we talked about this in November, so this is all old, but when they fell back on the Band-Aid, they should have been, it should have been revisited as to where to put that thing. And in my opinion, it should have been put on the heli base that's over behind the hospital. Now, people say, oh, well, they land helicopters there. I spent 40 years in aviation industry firefighting and most of that was with helicopters. I worked in Alaska for almost 30 years and that's all we did. We didn't drive cars, we flew in helicopters. And so I know what a good heli spot looks like and I could go in, it would take me less than an hour to point out to you, and with diagrams on how unsafe that spot is for helicopters to land, it's, helicopters crash on landing and takeoff and that spot is very, very unsafe. So the clinic could have gone there, it would have been out of sight, it's still been close to the hospital, it's flat, there's parking, there's a little dirt with the caddy have been moved, it would have been a perfect spot for it, but here we are. It's where it is. You heard tonight from a lot of people, one person from Douglas City was, you know, spoke well, but it seems that the people who have the signatory authority, all the way from Aaron Rogers, Mr. Tippett, and all of you, don't live in Weaverville. And, you know, it's in our backyard and it's like, it's beating horse dogs and it doesn't sit well. And so you can imagine if, I mean, in some parts of the county, maybe a double wide, you know, a single wide or whatever is acceptable, but, you know, you've got 130-year-old homes here and it's a, you know, yes, there are clinics in the area, but it's mostly homes. And I just kind of, a little resentful that we have no control over what somebody else is telling us to put in our backyard. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Okay, seen none. Close public comment, close the hearing. Bring back to the commission for your thoughts, comments, questions. Let me sure.
So my recollection of our meeting in November before it was continued was that we were having a discussion about our options, basically, in terms of the different avenues that we could go down. And it doesn't, didn't seem to me like this staff report, speaking about aesthetics only, was exactly the discussion that we had at that time. I mean, there was talk that we could revoke the conditional use permit, that we had concerns about noise and various other things that were not, that haven't been addressed yet, I guess. And so I'm a little unclear as to how the staff report was written and what our options are. And if you could help us with that, maybe that'll set the stage for our discussion.
So you're correct. The commission had before it an appeal of the director who had approved the change and so the aesthetics is one part of that, but it's not the only part. The other option that the commission had was to make a determination that the change was of such a nature that it was a modification beyond the conditional use permit, which at that point would be drawing the conditional use permit back, requiring them to start a project description over again with the new buildings. So if the commission finds that the modifications were so great that the director should not have approved those changes, that would draw the conditional use permit back and require them to file a new request and a approval process. You also have the option to find that those modifications were not of that nature, at which point you're looking at whether the approval based on the change in aesthetics is sufficient. There, the issue of the air conditioning units was brought up and as I recall, one of the things that I had expected to see tonight was the commission did have some questions as to the decibel level of those units. I thought that was going to be, I didn't see that. So I know that was an issue that the planning commission had concerned with, and one's more intentional as well, as to give the aesthetic commission a little bit more time to work through possible changes so that you would have an understanding of those changes were, and then with that understanding, you'd be able to make a better determination of whether to approve or retract the approval letter.
Thank you. So does that beg some further discussion or?
It seems likely that we may It seems likely that we may have a difference of opinion on how to proceed, maybe not. I guess I'll go ahead and make a motion to disagree with the planning director's characterization that this was on the, I don't have your words, an appropriate amendment under the conditional use permit. And I feel that it should be resubmitted as a, as a independent project and go through the normal process.
I will second that.
A question. So by doing that, that would, in essence, force looking at things like the decibel level of the air conditioners and, and all, all of the various problems that, that have been raised?
Yes, correct. So I think the terminology you're looking for is that you, as the planning commissioner, are making a determination of the substantiality of, of the changes that it's so substantial that it requires revision of the CUP. And if that's the case, if that's what the motion, and I believe that's what the motion is now.
Correct.
If that's the case, essentially this project would need to start over. Staff would need to look at what's there and work, work through approval. So that's, that's what I understand the motion to be and the answer to your question is yes, they would have to essentially go back from the beginning and look at this project.
And, I mean, that's essentially agreeing with the appeal, right?
Yes, if you, if you make a determination that the change was so substantial that it requires the conditional use permit to go back through the process, you're essentially denying the director's direction and that would mean you would have to factor staff for the conditional use permit through the process to start over.
And then if the clinic does not like that, they can appeal that to the board of supervisors?
I would have to, I would have to look that section up. I believe they do have an appeal to the board of supervisors and I believe they would have to get out in seven days, but I can look that up.
So is there any other discussion about the motion?
Yes, I, I do have a question. Would there be? Wait for counsel.
Counselor?
Counselor, I do have a question and follow-up. There's also the option of modify the CUP as well. Are we presented that option? Is that available to us to, I know that the work has put lots of time in the clinic as well, so to not start anew, but to make modifications to a conditional use permit, is that, is that considered an option as well?
Well, I'll let staff address the process ultimately. When I say start anew, it would, it would be a new application based on what's there. Doesn't necessarily mean that staff would have to start from scratch. Some of the, some of the work that's been done may, may be able to be, you know, upheld, but I would let them talk to just how much of that they could be used.
I understand, thank you. Did you want to touch down about?
Well, I, I guess we could address that. I mean, I guess we are in this discussion phase at this point. To, to start the project anew, there, there's just a lot of avenues that, that may lead to including litigation because there's some misunderstanding that, from what I read from the staff report, that the project was approved and these modulars were at the risk of the community district allowed to be put in at their own risk because there's some gray area there. But I, I, there, of course, there are concerns other than aesthetics. I know that a lot of the preview of these discussions have been the, the focus on aesthetics, but of course, there's issues on snow loads. Buildings are engineered and I've seen the plans, I've gone to the planning office and seen the plans, they're engineered for twenty pounds per square foot. The, the allowable snow load in Louisville, as we know, is forty pounds per square foot. So that, that alone raises some red flags. And of course, the H-back units and the, the decibels and just different stipulations and thresholds due for the noise element. So, so basically what I'm trying to say is I don't see the need for the project to be revoked entirely, but I would like for some of these issues to be addressed and looked at more closely. And as I said at the last meeting, to provide our planning department the leverage to be able to dig deeper into those issues and, and address them or correct them or whatever appropriate procedure would be. I know it's difficult, I, I don't, staff, any thoughts on, on that? I, I guess we're just planning, or we're trying to see how to proceed on all this and what our options are, so.
For one, we do have a copy of the section from code regarding use permits. And there are copies for each of you. Did you all receive that?
Yes.
And members of the public?
No, I didn't get one.
Can I get you a copy?
Please.
I would like a copy as well.
I just wanted to chime in. One of the problems with staff is we can't dictate or direct design. We're, we're essentially a review of what is presented and then reported to you. It's a, it's all of what you should have, blue roof or the red roof unless we have code that says we need to do that. That's the specific area.
Can I hear you?
Okay, sorry about that. So, so what we do is we look to the applicant to present a design application and then we go from, we go from what they present and bring it forward to you. We don't dictate that design or, you know, tell them what to do. Now, in this case, we did recommend that it go through, the direction that we work with the architectural review committee and that was based on the fact that those folks were here in Louisville and that they did prevent, or did provide some suggestions to that design, which they had tried to incorporate in the planning side. But again, it's, it's one of the things that in the planning department, the planning department facilitates an application, moves it forward, but we're not the ones that actually go and take care of and look at the aesthetics and look at the design and just comment on the impacts that it makes and how it's to the overall area. You know, if you put a brand-new contemporary building in a historic area, yeah, that would show up, you know, in our discussion, but if it's what matches what the other facilities are, then, then we would just present the project as proposed.
But you would address an issue of, for example, a forty-pound snow load requirement with a twenty-pound roof?
Well, that, that's, that's a, that's a plan check issue that's handled during, during the plan checks. There's stuff that they have to verify with building code, but they only look at building code, building code issues, not issues related to aesthetics.
No, I understand that, but this, this issue's come up a couple of times, so that is something you look at, is snow loads.
Yeah, I just look at and if a building official deemed it, deemed it appropriate.
Okay.
I know you don't normally allow additional comments, but it looks to me like you're giving me to take action for something that's on the agenda, so I was hoping maybe you would let us put in some additional comments.
Counselor, this is agendized. You are looking at the director's approval tier on appeal for that. The language may be a little bit gray as to what relates to it, but take action.
I'm not sure I understood your comment.
Ultimately, it, it, the very beginning of the language says that you're here on appeal of the planning director's decision, upholding the changes to the building. So that's what you're here on.
That's what's been advertised as the decision.
Correct.
To be made. So the upholding the planning director's decision on the architectural review results, is that what you're saying?
Well, the, the planning director's review of the architectural and aesthetics has to do with the change in the project. So as the planning commission, if his, if his acceptance of that is still in your mind substantial and should have been a new CUP, you can still give that decision.
Okay. I think we're not going to take that.
There's a lot of, a lot of discussion about what you guys are talking about that you're not getting, so.
Well, I want, is there any other thoughts or comments or motions to be made? I would like to make a subsequent motion. I would move that we do accept the planning director's decision of the scope of the change, the nature of the change, and that we do accept the work that was done by the, the work as we asked them to do last November and they reached a unanimous conclusion that changes would meet the, the local architectural appropriateness of the neighborhood. So my motion is only to deny the appeal.
I'm having issues with that because I do, I do see where you're coming from there, but also at the same time, I think there's, I think we have a lot better finished product if we start over from scratch. Basically, the public comment to hear what everybody has to say from the clinic and what everybody has to say from the public and have it all laid out in order according to what the project is going ahead now. And it's kind of a convoluted mess that we've ended up with, with different meetings and minutes from the work committee and then it, we haven't actually heard the entirety of the plan. It seems like we're getting bits and pieces and bits and pieces of, of public comment and it's all, everything's changed since we started and that's why I would, I would like to see a CUP for the modulars rather than a new CUP, rather than, but I do see where you're coming from and it would, if they've done the work, it's, it's hard to, to shut them down.
So I'm hearing no second?
Okay, the motion dies.
I have a question. You know, since you, Richard, since you brought up the, the question about the snow load, maybe I'm just naive and don't understand, but it seems to me that if they're going to be working on the roof design and working, putting up on the mansard roof and doing all of that, that they would, that would give them the opportunity to increase the, the snow load?
Yes, well, my understanding is that mansard roof, the exterior walls can support the added, the added mansard roof and the snow load, but it's the interior walls in the way. I have not walked into the building, but as I said, I've seen the structural drawings, the interior building cannot support the, the unadded snow load. So that, that is a concern. And that part of the mansard roof, I guess, will be held by posts, added posts on the exterior of the building, so that's going to help add that, add that, the weight of this mansard roof.
So they wouldn't be doing?
It's just a, this is a, a building issue?
I agree. This is what I'm about to say, that we've already heard from the director that this is an issue they have to make sure that it's changed with that code.
So I just.
At other structures, we don't address, you know, whether the poles are big enough to hold the smoothie.
Absolutely.
Very true.
I just have one, one thing, one something to clarify. So say the eventuality or the occurrence that the, the building does fail and, and that the county approved this project and then the snow load did not, building failed, basically, who, who lands with that responsibility? I mean, would the county share some of that responsibility? I mean, this is also a concern.
So again, the.
We're way off.
Is getting in the weeds.
Yeah, we're way off the topic. So as I see it, there's, the choice between is, is to deny the appeal and accept the design change and the work of the work to fix the aesthetics or to not accept the work work, but still accept that it was a minor change and therefore send it back for more work on that. Or find that it is too great a change, that decision was not appropriate and it sends it back for more CUP or start over, is the way it's been put.
That's correct, that's your argument.
The motion on the table is to do the latter, right, is to start over. Just want to be clear that that is what you're imposing on this decision. Why this decision?
I, I think the decision or the, the discussion that the work has unanimously approved these modifications that will mitigate the aesthetics is somewhat inaccurate. There is no question that the, that the committee unanimously approved various changes that were proposed by the applicant, but it was very clear at the end of our process that we felt we were doing, and I'm on that committee, that we were doing the best we could under the circumstances. The, and you could ask Bob Morris, who's the chair, if you wanted to, that none of us felt that what we approved completely mitigated the structure of the building. So I, I, I want to be clear in that, anyone can ask Bob, but, you know, we were tasked with certain, trying to improve the aesthetics of that building as, as, as it was delivered and installed on the site. And we did the best we could, working with what we had, but none of us felt, I guess, maybe I should just speak for myself, but there, there should be in the minutes of the last meeting, basically at the very end of the meeting, there was consensus on the committee that we were not fully mitigating the issue. There's only so much you can do with those blocks of building. So I feel a little bit uncomfortable about some of the comments that have been made that everything was mitigated based on, that is, to me, is a little bit inaccurate. Doesn't have anything to do with the motion I made.
I, I'm, I have less of an issue with, with the work, work than with the fact that I do remember one of our big discussions at the last meeting concerning this was air conditioning units and these mitigations are trying to hide the air conditioning units, but that's not the only issue with the air conditioning units. There was the noise and, and other stuff. So if the, if the aesthetics is fixed, that's one thing, but I, I'm thinking that there's more issues with the director's decision than only aesthetics. I think that modular buildings changed the entire scope of the project. I don't, the aesthetics is something that jumps out that everybody notices right off, but I think that there's, there's more to it than, than aesthetics and I think that the, I think that the, that it, having a director's use on top of it, I think it overstepped the bounds of a small change.
It's unfortunate we didn't reach this conclusion in November.
We thought we were going to have more stuff come back to us at this meeting also, so.
My, my opinion is we would have reached that decision at that meeting if we had. My opinion is we would have reached that decision at that meeting if we hadn't felt it necessary to continue it.
Is there any other discussion? Call for motion. All those in favor of the motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, I'd like to make a competing motion.
Oh, please.
It says here under section 32, that under section G, modification or invocation of a use permit specifies that the planning commission may revoke or modify a use permit if the planning commission, out of the determination of if it's an issue detrimental to public health, safety, welfare, or in a manner that constitute a public nuisance. My opinion is the HVAC units, the information given to us from Mr. Underwood at the last meeting of the decibel level of the units depending on the distance, says, so in my opinion, the fact that HVAC units are not being mitigated in any way and that issue is not being visited, I make a motion to modify the use permit. So, and modify the use permit, so giving on the basis of a public nuisance because it's HVAC units and as to give planning staff opportunity to make modifications or make suggestions on how those HVAC units and the sound emitted from them can be lessened or mitigated. Does that suffice, counsel?
Well, I think, again, that's probably something that's a reason or a finding, but I think the main issue is the director's change and mitigating the change and the substantialness of that, but your motion is appropriate and accepted.
Thank you.
I'm not sure I understand the motion, Commissioner.
The motion is-
In the context of the, it sounds like that sends it back to get mitigation of the noise.
Yes, that's correct. That is my intent.
Where does that leave all the other issues?
I'm okay with the other issues.
So then would you look for a subsequent motion to approve all the other work changes? Are you basically saying your motion-
Yes, I-
In the context of with the motion?
His current motion would send it back for a modification to mitigate the noise of the air conditioning units, from my understanding. It would have no other effect on the changes of work recommendations or other mitigation.
That's correct. Thank you, counsel.
So how does that relate, how does that relate to the appeal?
We need a second to discuss. Is there a second?
Sure, I'll second it.
So let's discuss, continue discussion of the implications of that. So this motion would send this back to staff, the current, I guess what I would hate to see us end up with is the same discussion as the next time this comes back, where we then declare this to be a major modification and send the thing back to square one. I am sympathetic to this motion where we are actually addressing the issue of noise and not just the aesthetics of the air conditioning units. All the other issues having been dealt with, but we haven't actually said by this motion, we think that's gonna be okay and I'm literally ending up right where we are right now at the next meeting with a, with some momentum to send it back to start at square one. I'd like to get that resolved-
Yes.
-tonight. But your motion is, you know, a valid motion.
So-
I just want to give Mr. Tippett a chance to let you know exactly what that motion would do at the staff level.
What I would say problematic is, my understanding is there's no, there's no noise in the results that were given by the testers, nothing that was identified, makes it problematic. So if it meets the code requirements, it meets the requirements of the document, I have nothing to force a change on. If it picks a direction to do that change and that would, you know, depending on how it is, it could be a code issue or many different things, but if they show that they mitigate what the requirements are, then they've met the condition. I don't have any reason to force a change.
The noise requirements, the general plan noise levels.
Yeah, yeah. Let's say if you can only go up to 80 dB and you give me a thing that says, well, we only see it's going up to 75 dB, then as staff level is concerned, we're done.
It's compliant.
Yeah, it's compliant.
And is it compliant?
I can't answer that question.
I-
The thing fact that I've had is I don't, I have not seen those numbers specific.
I have seen those numbers, if I may, Mr. Chairman. I actually did read the noise element and it says LQ and Lmax are two different conditions. LQ is equivalent continued sound levels and from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, that decibel level should be 55 dB, based on the information Mr. Underwood gave us that on November, that the nine units equals 81 decibels at 10 feet, at 40 feet more, they're attenuated at 77 levels, 77, I mean 69.6 decibels. Actually, to achieve the LQ required in the noise element to 55, you would have to be 210 feet away from the HVAC units. So, you know, and that, this is, I made the calculations, there's online calculators for decibel distances and whatnot, so I don't believe they do meet. I know that the residents on 170 Taylor Street, they are at 92 feet away, which decibel level would be 62.4, which is higher than the 55. So I mean, we're not quite splitting hairs, but I know it's getting a little, but that meets the noise element, I don't think it does. So that is the reason for my motion and that's the reason I believe this should be addressed. Especially, and lastly, also speaking to Mr. Morris, I guess the two layers of evergreen fencing that's gonna be put up, I mean, this is not an immediate solution. These evergreen bushes or fencing, they're gonna take four years to fully mature. That's four years that that noise buffering or that mitigation will not be in place. So that's another concern of mine.
Would you have any, would you consider a motion modification that accepts the director's decision that this is a minor change and that the noise has to go down the path you just established? Nevertheless, they would need to mitigate this. And yes, as I feel, you're still leaving the ax hanging over somebody's head, that this will end up with a, go back to square one decision down the road.
Yes, I would accept that. I don't necessarily want to see this project go back to square one. I don't know what the timeframe that would take and how long those modules are still gonna be sitting there with no improvements done upon it and to determine that in the eventuality that they might be deemed sufficient or approved. So yes, I would accept that as a minor modification, given the work, accepting the work of the work as an aesthetic recommendations, but addressing the noise issues.
And I would second that modification.
Okay.
Because you talked about time, possible add time, that gets the time occupation within two years.
Can you speak up?
Yeah, I can't hear you. That, you're looking for the modification of the compliance with that code, either add occupation or within two years for the plants to establish or, you know, a certain time.
Within two years.
I'm sorry, I don't understand your comment, Mr. Tippett.
He wants to know what timeframe you want that modification to occur. Do you want it to be, do you want them to be sound compliant by the time they move in?
Yes, that, I think that would be acceptable. I mean, I don't-
The reason I ask is because you've mentioned it takes four years for the plants to grow in, so am I, if I did a proposal that takes time to mature, is that acceptable? And that was where I was kind of focused in the question itself, so it's either you allow time, a little bit of time for that to happen or you want it to be open?
Right, when we open, I think that should be acceptable. I mean, that should be, I think that should be a condition, I believe.
Still second?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any more commentary or discussion of that subsequent motion?
I'm just wondering, if I could, staff could answer this, what's the probability that those mitigation measures are gonna come back before the planning commission and we're gonna have to do this again before somebody knows what's going on?
You're getting a very specific direction to review one specific condition of the overall project, you would address the aesthetic issues by, if you were to accept this motion. You're essentially asking me to go back and look at the air conditioner, not a noise issue. You would go back, review that and you would make the determination, there's compliant or not, and then we would share that with the director.
And would that involve an analysis by a sound engineer or?
We'll go back and look at, I have to go back and look at, my recollection, specifically what was provided, I don't remember right now and I'd have to go back and look at what we have on that has been provided. And if additional information is needed, then we call for it.
My opinion is the noise is not the only outstanding issue, so I'm not supportive of this motion.
Any other comments? Our motions? Is it? Okay, then we have a subsequent motion before us. Do you have that? Clearly, we're all clearing. What's gonna end up being, actually, it's the tape that's gonna be cleared. I believe the motion, Commissioner Hord, keep me honest here, I believe your motion is to accept the decision by the director that this was fundamentally a minor change, except that the aesthetics are addressed by the work work, with the exception of mitigating the actual noise levels, which staff will take back and determine if further mitigations are necessary and impose those as conditions.
And then if it is not, then it must be addressed and resolved prior to-
To opening.
To opening.
That's correct.
So that is the motion, Commissioner, which is seconded by Mr. Stewart. Any other questions to come? I'll call for a vote. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Can you grant the first motion?
This is a subsequent motion first. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post?
Nay.
Board one. So that ends item number five. And hopefully I'll always end there quickly and close this out. Does this have to come back to us?
No, it'll come back if, because it's something of interest, I'll bring it back to the director before I don't believe he finished the question.
Okay. And the way that works is since there was a subsequent motion that was voted on and passed, the first motion becomes moot. All right. 60 seconds for the room. All right, moving on to item number five. Number item five is a public hearing for a variance. This is a request for an annual variance from the required 350-foot cannabis cultivation setback from neighboring residential dwelling, from eighth to neighboring residential dwelling located at 91 Shastky Drive in Douglas City. This is APN 025-140-25. The applicant is Jean Bang.
Jean Bang is here tonight, he's got any questions. So this one was pretty straightforward. There was one neighbor in the 350-foot setback and it was a positive comment. I did want to clarify one thing that Chairman McHugh pointed out the other day, that on figure three, page 11, I initially wrote that BLM gave conditional approval recommended. They're a federal agency, they can't really ever recommend approval, correct me if I'm wrong, but.
Nevertheless, they did.
But they did, yeah. There was no approval, so I should have just said conditional, condition recommended in a sense. So the condition was that the applicant surveyed their property. The applicant had a survey done of their property in January 2019 to make sure, other reasons, basically, and then, so, okay, okay. So lastly, I did put together kind of a more robust finding of facts list with some input from SHN. It's a little more straightforward in my opinion, besides some examples of other projects and also if you guys have any more recommendations for future variances, again, I welcome comments and recommendations, just so you guys have a clearer picture of what's going on with these sites. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Is there any question for staff on the side of the commissioners? All right then, this is a public hearing. I would like to offer this up to the public for any comments or input to the commission on this application.
Good evening, commissioners. First off, Jean Bang, Douglas City. I am the applicant for this variance, so I actually like to thank Bella and the staff at the county's planning department of actually getting this document all well-prepared for tonight, so thank you guys. But as you guys can see in the pack itself, really I'm just asking for variances. There's restrictions of 350 feet to 110 of a neighboring dwelling. That dwelling itself is a licensed permitted commercial cannabis grow as well from the county, so I, obviously I wanted to go ahead and follow those same footsteps. First off, like I said, I'm in the process of obtaining the county. This variance is the only last thing that's preventing me from obtaining. And then I am also, side by side, trying to attain the state license as well. I went through the Fish and Wildlife Alteration Agreement, you know, the North Coast Water Board Fire Misses, things like that as well. So currently doing the SEQA, not waiting for the county to finish theirs, but you know, a few neighbors that we're at, they are licensed as well. We took the liberty to actually go ahead and take the further steps of just doing our SEQA stuff. So with that all being said, like I said, I hope you guys do grant me this variance tonight so that we could go ahead and continue being compliant with the county as well as the state. On the side note, with all the things that's going on while I was preparing my lot to be compliant with a lot of the inspectors coming, you know, Rob Barcelona from the sheriff's, sheriff's department, as well as Fish and Wildlife, Mary Morales from the county, case manager as well as inspectors. A good note about that is, as you guys can see on the- A good note about that is, as you guys can see on the very bottom, says there's a vacant residential on the south side of my property. That is a vacant, but it is an illegal grower that's growing on there. The good news is that he does, he's not there anymore. With all of those people coming on, I mean, it is working, so I just want to say thank you. I mean, it is working, they packed up and they left. I mean, when I say they left, they left, there was a RV there. I mean, they packed up their RV, took all the trash, water tanks, they left. So there's nobody growing there anymore this year, so that's good. And then, two houses down there, same grower that comes up to my lot, they're gone as well. So it is working. So, like I said, you know, just hopefully I get it and everybody around me sees that it's working and called it good. So, thank you.
Questions? Any questions of the applicant? Anybody else like to comment? Mr. Harvey?
Okay, Edward Harvey Weaverville again. Granting a license is not just about the property, but also the person. You're granting a license to the person. I used to live in Minnesota, I think. You used to live in Minnesota, I think. As far as I can tell, there were no illegal grows on this particular property. You did mention the neighbors who were sort of there. As far as I know, even no felony conviction. And he seems to have done a lot of work. So I think you should go ahead and approve the variance. A lot of those conditions will come up with other meetings, I'm sure, that won't meet that. So anyway, good luck.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, my name is Steve Roethaus. And I just wonder more about the ordinance of the law becoming precedent rather than the law. And if it keeps becoming precedent, you refer to it rather than what has been established. I don't know the acrologies, I just walked into this, but I do realize that once something starts moving in a certain direction, oh yeah, we've done that before, we can maybe do it again. That's basically the point I want to bring out, because this thing is exploding in our county, and we don't want to become lackadaisical about our approach to residential rural, rural residential area, homes, families, and the future of what this county should be and could be. Precedent law. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. John Brower from Junction City, and I would encourage approval of this variance. I know the applicant has done an awful lot of work in, over a pretty long period of time. He's got an awful lot invested and done everything within his power to be compliant. I don't think he's picked up any complaints or anything, and should absolutely be allowed to operate. He's one of the few that have been persistent enough to stick with the process thus far, and I encourage approval.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, commissioners. Justin Hawkins from Hayfork. I want to encourage the commission to also approve this variance. Mr. Bang is doing quite a good job, in my opinion, of trying to follow the rules and be compliant. And the neighborhood up there is such that it's kind of become synonymous with cultivation, and the neighbor has approved it, so it seems like a great fit. And these are the sort of people we definitely want to try to encourage more in our county, I think. They're, you follow the rules, and I don't know what more we could ask for somebody. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? So you're none? Bring it back to the commission. Commissioners?
I'll just, if I may, go ahead and make a motion.
Please.
I move that we approve the commercial cannabis variance application, number 2019-003, in order to allow the reduction of the commercial cannabis cultivation setback provision outlined in Trinity County Code 17.43.050.8, from 350 feet to 110 feet from the residential structure located on APN 025-140-23-00, and shall be subject to the, to the, subject to the findings of fact and conditions of approval as outlined in the staff report.
My second. Motion and a second. I have a question. Staff? In the motion we just heard, it cites an APN with a 23 in it. And then it graph, the page 11 figures show the APN with a 25 in it.
Yeah, that's not the-
That's not it?
Do you get the 45?
Oh, the one, yeah, that is, the 23 is right.
Twenty, yeah, this is the one in the variance.
Well, on page 11.
Twenty-three is-
Oh, it's a variance from that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
From.
It's been a long day, I apologize.
That's okay.
Yes, it is correct. Yeah, I'm sorry, do we get a second?
Yes.
All right, who was it?
Commissioner Hord.
Commissioner Hord, thank you. Is there any further discussion that's more relevant than mine? I'm just-
I would just like to say that I really feel that he has gone pretty much above and beyond in seeking his own SEQA along with his neighbors. And I think this is the kind of person that we want to have as a cultivator.
Thank you, Commissioner. I am encouraged that issuing variances is driving people into the black market. Any other comments? I'd like to call for a vote on this, though, commissioners. All those in favor, motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any others? And with that, we are, item number six, manage from the commission. Commissioners?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment in regards of the comment made by Mr. Maloff earlier about our general plan committee ad hoc. Seems like an interesting idea. I, for one, would be willing to jump on board if that would be the case. That's it, thank you.
I think maybe the thing we should hear is what's going on with staff.
Yeah, we, we've been down that road. Probably best way to say it. You might recall the housing element. Many years ago, I think, Commissioner Stewart was on board, and that was the housing element that had come from the community, and it was running about four years behind. And we made a substantial investment, and I always hear this, a substantial investment of hundreds of thousands of dollars just to give the mission statement to change the last to the start, the last general plan. And we, essentially, we have found that you do need a coordinator, and that's what you're hiring a consultant for a general plan update. It's still a document that has to go to the community for input, especially this one, because we're going through and taking all the unclassified, and our desire is to have that final classified. And so, you know, those kind of things are going to take a lot of community input, a lot of community time. But we have to have people to put that together, to take the notes, create the maps, print the data points and the input that we need to essentially present that. So, a lot of it, well, you know, the, the, there is a lot that is written by the consultant, but quite honestly, it's boilerplate meat and steak code and requirements. But the body of it and the spirit of it still is going to come direct from the community through the public meetings that we'll have to have to make those findings to change the system.
Can you give us some visibility into the timeline, when this is going to get going?
Probably in a year or-
A year from now?
Yeah.
The project will start a year from now?
Yeah, it'll probably take two or three years.
Okay. Is there any impetus from the board to accelerate that? Are they okay with us not doing this for a year?
We are going back to the board to address the priorities and look at them. But the problem that we have had is, I'll tell you, for example, we have been trying to hire a senior planner and associate planner, assistant planner, for well over a year and a half now, and we've had no luck. Well, we have, we did pick up- And also, we have wonderful planning out there, which I helped that right away.
When you take your foot out of it, I will, I'd like to say we have a fine new planner.
But it's, it's very difficult. We are, we are recording planners, one from the East Coast, that has California roots. But it just, it's not, the problem right now is, is the salary and the amount of planning people, planner history up in this area.
Okay.
So, it's okay, and this is kind, this is basically a rhetorical question. It's okay to keep collecting a thousand dollars from everybody who, who wants to apply for a license and not starting it for another year? Like I said, it's a rhetorical question, I don't expect it to be-
Well, the, the general plan is very expensive document.
I, I understand that.
I do not believe we can collect enough. The question about, is it warranted? Yes, because essentially, the, what is driving the absolute need for an update of that general plan is it has no merit on component.
Right, I understand that.
It's not, but it's written back in the seventies.
What, my question wasn't so much, wasn't so much, why are we doing it? It was, is it okay, given that we're collecting this money, to put it off so long?
We don't want to put it off. It's just, it's a, it's a, essentially, it's a staffing issue that it can't, it's very hard to bring it forward. We could bring it forward, but anything that, that has to go in that place will have to be displaced or delayed.
Right.
So you're saying that if we did try to create some sort of committee and start a process, that it would serve no function, and, or couldn't be supported by existing staff at all? That we'd have to do that somehow on our own, or?
Well, my advice would be to the planning commission, or to the board, that we not head that way, that we've had experiences that have left us with lingering documents that take a lot of work to, to bring it forward.
We've had experience with outside consultants driving it.
I think we've had better luck picking the right, and again, as a personal advice to general plan, I'd take a more facilitator. If you pick the right one, you can get things done for you. And there are some very good folks out there that are very experienced with preparing them, and they're the ones that tell you when to hold meetings, what, you know, information you want to bring forward, and what gets recorded, and what you need to do.
Okay.
I suggest we talk to our supervisors.
I suggest we do.
If we have a different sort of opinion.
There are just the priorities to make this happen somehow with appropriate support for staff to pull it on. Okay, thank you. There was one item, it was a request for agendizing and appeal. Is there an appeal in O.A. or is this?
No, that, that item, unfortunately, county council left. It addressed, but I'll, I'll address it briefly. The request, the requister did not identify relief of the condition, or what condition he was seeking relief from. It was a general, a request for a pill, and when you appeal something, you're supposed to focus on that item that you're appealing. Or ask before relief from.
So, so what?
For instance, you got to run your generator nine to four. I want to run my generator all day long, I would appeal that condition.
Okay, so, just as, as a general question, in a situation like that, what do they do?
Well, the issue, again, I'm kind of answering for county council, so, right. There, if you're not, if you're not appealing the condition, you're appealing the rule, the ordinance. And that, that rests not in this forum, it rests with the board. And it rests with, openly, as I said earlier, if you don't like the rules, that's, that's something you write to your supervisor or you bring up in public comments. But you can't appeal the rule because the rule was established through ordinance. And appeals are not formulated to fight the rule, to get relief of the rule or the condition that's required of you.
Okay, understood. Any other comments from commission? Manage from staff?
Does everybody intend to make the planning commission meeting to the next few months?
That's a broad statement. In general, no. There will be some that I can't make, so a little more specificity would be helpful.
Okay, let's start with May.
Our meetings are the ninth and the 23rd, is that correct?
I plan on attending both meetings, but I am going to have to have some further surgery due, as a result of the surgery I had at the end of May, the emergency surgery I had at the end of March, whatever month this is, at the end of March. And so, if the timing is right, I will be here. I don't know yet when it's going to be scheduled.
And that one, you said, which one would it be?
I don't-
You're not telling me.
Probably, if, it might be that it would probably be affect the ninth, if it's going to affect any. But I, I'm hoping that it won't affect anything.
I can make both those, I believe. I'm going to be working out of town that week, but I plan to be back by 7:00 P.M. on the ninth, so.
Okay, anybody else?
I should be able to make the both in May.
And how about if we shoot for June, let's try to forecast out for June as well. And then next meeting, I'll ask you back July, if you know.
What are the meetings in June?
Yes.
What are the dates?
They are on the 13th and 27th.
I will not be here on the 13th. I will not be here on the 13th.
At this time, I would say I will be here both times, but it kind of depends on what happens with the surgery in May.
Okay, thank you, that's it?
I have one more comment, if I may, Mr. Chairman. It seems that our attendance has dwindled, and actually, that's in light of Darrow recording these and providing on YouTube. I have heard comments from people in Hayfork and Hyman Palm that they actually, they appreciate it because they don't really have to drive all the way here, yet they can be involved with the committee, keep, keep up with what's going on, so thank you for that.
You're getting, in the neighborhood of 100 hits on each meeting. People are, people are watching.
Thank you for that.
I have mixed feelings.
And by the way, I don't think I can write a general plan.
Darrow was there when that-
I'm waiting for Charles to just produce a draft we can work with. We are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.